Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Thanks to all the candidates that are joining us today to participate in this forum. Thank you for all of the members of the club who are also joining in live to watch our forum today. The candidates that will be hearing from tonight include Howard Edelman. Please let me know if I've pronounced any names incorrectly. Howard Edelman, Tristan Isador, Brian Cross Guerero, Stephanie Loretto, Summer McBride, and Daryl Meth. So the format this evening is that we'll have two minutes per question for six candidates. We'll have an intro, five questions, and a conclusion. So that'll roughly take us to about ninety minutes to ninety to a hundred minutes. So I think that there is a, oops, sorry. I know that you sent the randomized, hold on. Sorry, the my connectivity issues just kind of put me a little bit out of sorts. Getting not in track. Okay, here we go. I have everything now. All right, so we're going to start off with opening statements and again, two minutes, two minutes per candidate. And are you ready? It looks like Jeff is ready with his timer and our first candidate that will be here from this evening will be Mr. Daryl.
Thank you all. My name is Daryl Methie and thank you to the Culver City Democrats for putting on this forum. I'm running for Culver City School Board because I really believe in our public schools. Culver City Public Schools are special. They connect our community in a way that no other institution can. As Culver City parents, all our kids go to the same middle school and the same high school, and our schools are central to who we are as a community. I've lived in Culver City for more than fifteen years. Both my children have attended Culver City Schools since kindergarten. Between them, I've been a CCUSD parent for a decade. And some of you also know me from my volunteer work as the president of the Downtown Business Improvement District. I entered this race because our schools face real challenges and opportunities after COVID-19. Now is the time for our schools to build back better, as our president would say, and we can set big goals for recovery. Our mission should be to make Culver City Schools the best public schools in Los Angeles County. Sounds big, but we can do it. My top goals to to get there, smaller class sizes, safe and clean spaces to learn, and make excellence in education our mission. I believe equity and excellence have to go together. Every solution for closing achievement gaps requires more teacher time per student and more individualized opportunities for learning. And every child deserves to be challenged in school. A school board member also needs to know the community to be able to oversee the district budget and work with management and the unions. That's how we make change. I will bring my experience in civic affairs and leadership and as a parent to the school board, and I will work to find common ground with everyone to get change done. Culver City has the opportunity right now to really level up our schools for all of our students. So thank you for listening tonight. And I hope you'll go to memphyforculvercity.com to learn more about me because together I think we can make Culver City Schools the best they can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl Methie, and apologies for spelling, for pronouncing your last name correctly. Okay, so next we will be hearing from Brian.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Guerrero. I'm a Culver City parent. My son went to El Marino and then Culver Middle School and Culver High School. I'm an educator of twenty-seven years. Most of that time was teaching down in Lennox where I was an elementary and middle school teacher and a curriculum specialist for twenty-one years. I also taught high school in Mexico for a while, and my wife and I were teacher trainers for two years in the Philippines with the US Peace Corps. I'm active in the labor movement. I was elected president of my local teachers' union three times. Being a union leader also means you're an organizer. I've organized large and small actions targeted at districts when they were treating folks unfairly, and I've organized with school districts when they remembered that our goal, building better schools, is a goal that we all share. It is much more productive when districts and employee unions can work together. I've also organized with parents and students for a greater voice in district decision-making and against things like charter schools and ICE raids. Now, I work for the California Teachers Association as a staff developer and educational policy analyst. It's my job to follow all the new policies that come down from Sacramento related to education and explain them to our local leaders so they can prepare their members. I work with topics like distance learning, learning acceleration, social emotional learning, universal TK, ethnic studies, community schools, testing, and so on. I'm running for school board because the skill sets and perspectives that I've mentioned are not currently represented on our school board. We have good parents and good community members, but no one who's taught K-12 or ever been on the receiving end of district mandates that say, "You will all teach using project-based learning," or something like that, without saying how or when or what supporter, what materials. All of the things Culver City has to work on, improving instructional quality, being inclusive to all students, especially students with disabilities and English learners, equity and restorative justice, and removing structural barriers, mental health, school safety, better labor management relations, much better parent engagement, would all benefit from having a practitioner, someone with experience on the front lines as part of the team creating the policies and help guiding the work. This is what I do for a living. It's what I did in Lennox. It's what I do with CTA up and down the state in Sacramento, and it's what I can do for Culver City. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Brian. Okay, next up will be Howard. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I've been an educator for twenty-six years, myself, a majority of which has been creating true equity for students from an incredible wide variety of backgrounds. I've been a classroom teacher for twenty-two years, and since 2014, I've worked as a foster youth services counselor for the LA County Office of Education, representing the educational rights of more than thirty thousand students in foster care across eighty school districts of LA County, including Culver City. Every day presents new and unique opportunities for me to create true equity for Black, Latino, LGBTQ, ELA, unhoused, and special ed students who have also experienced unspeakable trauma. I attend IEP meetings. I evaluate transcripts. I ensure that districts are in compliance with current foster youth legislation, and I also facilitate workshops on trauma-informed practices and youth mental health first aid. I'm running, and this is going to sound a little dramatic, because Culver City is at a crossroads. Culver City Unified is at a crossroads. Over the past year, the district has been plunged actually into complete chaos by a school board and an administration that has been hijacked by an incompetent horde of race-baiting, virtue-signaling, bio-skewing ideologues whose every pronouncement and action have flown directly in the face of rational, intelligent, educational decisions. Because honestly, their true intent is to destroy the current system and build some ridiculous utopia based on what they claim to be empathetic, equitable humanitarian reasons, but really, what they're about is gaining total control. They've used our children, often the ones most often that they profess to care about as props and pawns. They've launched vile personal attacks on anyone and everyone who dares question or otherwise speak out against their decisions. They made wholesale changes regarding curriculum, safety, personnel, with zero proof of past or future efficacy. I spent the past year, along with many other parents, students, faculty, caregivers, and Culver City residents, pleading with the school board and the administrators and the superintendent to change course, but not only have they refused to do it.
Okay.
Keep going where they are.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. All right, next we'll be hearing from Stephanie.
Thank you, Maximina. Hello, Culver City Dums. My name is Stephanie Loretto. I believe in building a culture of care that empowers students, families, faculty, and staff to thrive. My mission is to strengthen the pillars of achievement, belonging, and community that support this culture of care. Let's grow an environment where everyone feels safe, heard, validated, and supported to achieve. My values align with the goals of the Culver City Democratic Club. Like the club, I also want to stimulate educational interest in our community, drive participation of constituents in politics, and implement democratic policies. My school, our school district, is a fertile ground to grow democratic values among young people and their families. I'm a queer Filipino-American progressive who advocates for equity, sustainability, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am a parent to two student leaders at the high school and at the middle school. In the school district, I serve students and families through multiple organizations, including the Local Control Accountability Plan Partner Advisory Committee, the Inclusive Practices Administrative Regulations Committee, the Equity Advisory Committee, and more recently, I founded the Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Parent Affinity Group at CCHS. Local leaders endorsing me include Culver City Mayor Dr. Daniel Lee, Councilmember Alex Fish, CCUSD Board Members Paula Amazola and Dr. Kelly Kent, and recent Board Member Dr. Tashawn McKeefen, who was immediate past president, as well as former Culver City Mayor Megan Sally Wells. I thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce myself.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Next we'll be hearing from Summer. Two minutes.
Hello, everyone. I've served on the Culver City School Board for the past six years and have been an active community member and volunteer for over thirteen. I have four children in the district and one recent grad. I served as board president during the entire first year of the pandemic and use my position and votes to prioritize the needs of our most vulnerable students and to honor the needs of our staff and teachers during an unprecedented time. My track record and the initiatives I successfully advanced in our district speak for themselves. I was the first board member to advocate for an equity coordinator and a strategic equity plan, which was passed in 2020 and has been used as a framework to guide the district towards more equitable practices, including implementation, early implementation of ethnic studies, anti-racist training, and expanded engagement with our students like POC for Change, who partnered with us to identify gaps in our equity plan. I was a part of a small team who connected the high school to the Western Justice Center in 2018, and they provided the first optional but district-wide anti-bias training. It was funded in part by Council of PTA and focused on gender equity. I was the only board member to remain active in the Equity Advisory Council from its inception to the present time. I don't just talk about equity and inclusion. I work for it. And now I know that it takes policy and funding and political will to radically transform our schools. We have an unusual opportunity that many people may not understand. More money will be poured into our schools this year than in the history of public education in California. Our students need every penny. We must have experienced board members who understand education and the challenges we're facing right now so those dollars aren't squandered. We know how Prop 98 works. Sometimes it's a floor, but most of the time it's a ceiling. Whatever we invest today must benefit our students for years to come. That can only happen through thoughtful planning, participatory budgeting, improving staff morale, and taking a critical look at where dollars are being wasted. We have a unique opportunity to fund programs and initiatives that are desperately needed and long overdue. If reelected, I will be relentless in securing the district's commitment to serving every student every day.
Thank you, Summer. All right, so we'll have Tristan next for your two-minute intro. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maximina. Thank you, Culver City Democratic Club, for having us here today. My name's Tristan Isador. A little bit of my professional history. Went to school in Syracuse University, studied political science and urban planning. When I was at Syracuse University, I worked as an equity specialist in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. I now am working as a Section Three Case Manager for Youth Employment with the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. I oversee the Jordan Downs Housing Site in Watts. That's a project in South Central, and that's what I do. I'm running because I personally believe that we are at an inflection point in our district, our city, and in our world. Make no mistake, this election is consequential. We have three seats open that could set the tone for the majority of the board for generations to come. I'm running to meet the moment. I'm so proud and honored to have a policy platform that is rooted in community, rooted in diversity and inclusion with an equity and racial justice lens that champions the issues that matter to all of us. From issues of equitable education to mental health and well-being, from improved school facilities to support teachers and staff, transportation and safe routes to school, and environmental sustainability. I encourage everyone who's interested in that to go to tristanes.com/issues to look at our policy platform to hear what we're talking about. And I'm going to end off with support because time is ending pretty fast. I'm so proud and honored to be supported by regional elected officials, LA County Accessor Jeffrey Praying, Los Angeles City Councilmember Mike Bonin, Culver City Mayor Dr. Daniel Lee, Culver City Councilmembers, just meaning Monica Gordon, Alex Fish, four of the five Culver City School Board members, Culver City Vice President Paula Amazola, Culver City Board Member Dr. Kelly Kent, Dr. Sean McKeefen, Summer McBride, former Mayor Megan Sally Wells, as well as former Board President Charles Sobiger. And I'm running out of time, and I just want to say that I'm running out of mandate, and I know I should practice. I'm sorry. Bye.
Thank you, Tristan. Thank you for those wonderful intros. We'll be moving on to our first question of the evening. This will be directed, I mean, first will be, you'll all get the same questions. The first person, candidate to answer the first question will be Summer, and that question is, "Which are the three most important policies the board should adopt or has adopted to provide clear guidance to the superintendent to improve safety in our schools?"
It's hard to think of just three, but to start off, safety and creating spaces of care in our campuses means that we are making sure that we are addressing the needs of our students and staff, mental health, with an emphasis on trauma-informed care and developing and refining our plans so that our students are not only safe, but they feel safe, and so do our staff. So the first thing would be to make sure that we are fully funding counseling, staff, therapists, nurses, to make sure that the mental health of our students and the people within the walls of our schools and on our campuses is protected. Additionally, we have to provide training, targeted training, to our security staff. We do fund security in the district, and it's important that our security staff know that they are an integral part of our community. They are not just there to oversee our students and to be a presence of, you know, warm adult bodies who have a heavy presence but don't know necessarily how to interact with our students on a relationship level. So making sure that as we hire security or as we train our security, we're training them to understand the importance of conflict resolution, relationship-building mediation, how to actually implement restorative practices that do include consequences, but also are about repairing harm and knowing when there is an offense and how it affects not just the person that has been offended, but whole groups of people. So in addition to funding our therapists and counseling and nursing staff so that every site has enough staff and training our security team to make sure that they know how to respond to the needs of our community, I think it's also important to send our principals and assistant principals, the site leadership, to training that will allow them to understand the impact that they have on the care that our staff give to students. Because if the relationship doesn't exist between the site leadership and the staff, then you're not going to have communities of care on our campuses. And so it's all about training and implementing these plans that we've talked about ad nauseam over the years and really putting the money behind it.
Thank you, Summer. Okay, next up will be Darrell. Which are the three most important policies the board should adopt or has adopted to provide clear guidance to the superintendent to improve safety in our schools?
Well, thank you. I think I'm going to say, as Summer did, three is a hard number to work with on this because there are so many. You know, every parent's worst nightmare is realized when we turn on the television and saw what happened in Valley. And we know that security in our schools means a number of things. One part of it is just straight-up physical security. We need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep our kids safe. And when we look at what happened in Valley, one of the things is horrifying was to notice that the local police seem to be unfamiliar with the schools entirely. We need to make sure that for safety purposes, our police know they have a relationship with the schools. They know they're around them. They can respond. Our superintendent was at the city council a few weeks ago asking to make sure that the police had sufficient equipment. I think that from a security perspective, that's important. But we also know that that's also not the biggest, not what's going to happen most often. We're also dealing with security between students. There's bullying, which is a serious problem, and we have to make sure that we're addressing, again, with training. We also, many of us saw a video that circulated widely of a fight that took place on campus at the high school. And one of the things that was disturbing about it was how long it lasted. Right? Fights happen. It's just, there's not much you can do about that. But when it lasts for a really long time and you're not seeing adult supervision, you start to wonder what's going on. And how do we make the students safe? Because there could have been a knife, there could have been guns. That takes more adults on campus who have the right training, who can deal appropriately with the students. I say appropriately because we have to recognize that race, gender, these things matter. We're not talking about a police state. We're talking about people who are trained and who know how to handle not only discipline appropriately, but, you know, to use the best restorative justice to make sure that we're making our students feel safe with one another.
Next up is Brian. Which are the three most important policies the board should adopt or has adopted to provide clear guidance to the superintendent to improve safety in our schools?
Sure, thank you. I think the first one is, there's an idea called multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. You may have heard of this before. It's this idea that over the years, schools all across the country, all across the state have developed kind of patchwork of supports for students, patchwork solutions. Sometimes they work in concert with each other. Sometimes they work in opposite directions. And so the idea of multi-tiered systems of support is developing levels of support for students, levels of expectations. If a student responds to the structure and the support that's provided at the first level, great, you know, they're happy and everything's successful. If they don't, then you move to kind of a more intensive level of support. You get them additional counseling. You get them additional types of behavior management skills and interventions and things like that, all the way, all the way up until the students are finally receiving and responsive to the type of support that they're getting. This has never been implemented completely in Culver City or almost anywhere else. It's not unique to Culver City. But I think the first priority should be really developing this, this plan, which means identifying what are the different interventions and supports you provide to students. And then what kind of flows into my second thought is staff training. Because if the staff doesn't know what the interventions are at different levels, if they don't know how to access it for students, if students don't understand what's going on to them, if parents don't understand. And when I say staff, I mean staff at all levels, whether that's security staff, as someone mentioned, that's teachers in the classroom, that's classified staff, that's cafeteria workers and custodians. Everyone on campus needs to understand how this plan articulates and supports students so that they can access it and get students the support that they need. The last one I would say is just that physical safety. There are a number of physical safety improvements that have been mentioned that have not fully been completed. They haven't been built yet. They're on order and coming. That type of stuff does need to get finished, and those safety plans need to be developed to make sure everybody knows what to do in a case of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Tristan.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I'm going to echo my colleagues who were saying that three was a hard number to top, but I just want to make sure that I'm answering this question with an equity and racial justice lens. Because I wholeheartedly think that if we don't do that, when we talk about safety, what we're going to do is just perpetuate the school to prison. But for me, I think that we need to be talking about mental health and well-being because I wholeheartedly think that students thrive in districts with policies and practices that result in mental well-being, irrespective of an individual's diagnoses or lack thereof. I think that in order to realize our whole childhood approach to meeting students' needs, we need to support student relationships with family, peer, and educators, as well as school climate. I think that we do this by one, increased training with social emotional learning. I think that we need to interrupt the criminalization of students by reducing the number of on-campus security personnel and school resource officers that just, again, perpetuate our school-to-prison pipeline. And I think that we also do this by increasing the number of onsite counselors and hiring trauma-informed specialists that can support a culture of clear and explicitly stated behavioral expectations from both students and staff. And I realize I'm doing one too, so this is the third one. Reforming our district-wide approach to discipline, implementing restorative practices, K through PK through twelve. That's all I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Tristan. Next up is Stephanie.
Public schools are essential to thriving, healthy communities, and a safe school environment strengthens the people participating in it. School safety, especially concerning gun violence, is an intersection of issues that need collective solutions. The burden is not solely on the school district, but it needs to also collaborate with many organizations to address the concerns that contribute to this. To maintain safety on campus, CCDUSD must focus on preventative measures, providing more robust, multi-tiered systems of support and positive behavior interventions, and apply a social justice framework for the fair distribution of resources and equitable treatment of all students to help them feel safe and secure physically and psychologically. Not only that, but I also feel that CCUSD has to do a better job at collecting data about bias and harassment incidents. Without that data, we don't know how to benchmark, and we don't know how to solve these solutions. We have safe, we have safe space proclamations and anti-hate resolutions. But what good are those resolutions and board policies if we cannot support it with the data and go and make goals to say, hey, we want our children not to be traumatized by further bias and harassment. Safety can also be bolstered by supporting local and state efforts for tougher gun restrictions, especially assault weapons. I support the clear instruction of policy and protocol for active shooter situations on campus and the surrounding neighborhood. Students should be educated on age-appropriate actions to take for safety. The school should be required to communicate what students and staff should do and then operate regular drills to train them. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Right, that concludes. Oh, no, we have one more for Howard. Howard, which are the three most important policies the board should adopt or has adopted to provide clear guidance to the superintendent to improve safety in our schools?
An angel just got its wings. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, I am somebody who works with kids who have been traumatized. I facilitate workshops. I train trainers in youth mental health first aid, trauma-informed practices, PBIS, restorative justice. I work with a ton of mental health professionals. And I can tell you what's going on at our schools is completely detrimental to the mental health of all of our children. I'm going to get to exactly what I think we need to do, but this is a perfect example. Somebody, I believe it was Darrell, mentioned there was a big fight, a riot, pretty much, with about twenty-five to thirty kids of color. So the board was patting itself on the back for removing the traumatizing impact that they say security personnel might have on students of color. At that point, we had a bunch of kids look at it. They'd just graduated high school wearing windbreakers as security. So they removed what they said was going to be a traumatic condition for students of color, which directly led to a riot on campus, traumatizing children of color because it was kids of color fighting other kids of color, plus the traumatizing effect of the months-long fallout from that brawl. And then when we had that security meeting last month, there was a trauma-informed specialist on the stage just patting herself on the back for the restorative justice response to that thing, to an issue that they have directly caused. We can do a number of things to stop the security issue on our campus. When the teachers' union rep has to address the school board and say that seventy percent of the high school teachers surveyed do not feel safe on campus, do not feel like there are any consequences or any repercussions for the actions on campus, we are doing them and our kids a disservice. They're not implementing restorative justice correctly. Somebody mentioned that restorative justice is restorative not only to the student who does it, but the student or whoever is that was offended or was harmed. I don't think they're doing enough to do that. They're not providing any kind of justice. Justice is fine, but it has to be applicable to the situation. If a kid screws up, paints on the campus wall, the students have to get rid of the campus, the painting on the campus wall. It doesn't mean that there's no justice whatsoever or there are no consequences. We also need to bring back SROs to the district as well, but we can talk about that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. All right, that now concludes our first question. We'll be moving on to the second question. Non-district students attending on permit are essential to maintaining CCDUSD's enrollment and funding. They also represent a significant portion of our racial and economic diversity. But currently, these students are subject to tougher academic and disciplinary standards. As the board member, what specific policy changes would you advocate for to balance excellence, equity, and economics in this situation? And we'll start with Howard.
As a parent of two children who originally permitted into the district, I do have, you know, I guess I have some skin in that game. And I don't think we need to change anything. I think it is a privilege. There are reasons that people at this, well, up until, up until recently, there are reasons that people did want to come to Culver City Unified. We were sort of a shining city on the hill, but over the last year, I don't think we're going to have to worry about keeping that number up because we're going to have to worry about it because people are pulling their kids out, teachers are starting to just leave the district in droves, and the current situation has become really bad. We've had an issue on campus recently that there was a gun on campus. It took a lot to get, to get the administration and the district and the board and the superintendent to respond to parent requests about that. But apparently, the child that had the gun was a permitted student, and apparently, that student is still attending our school. When you sign, when you come in on a permit out of district, you sign a contract, and I think that's very reasonable to say, you are here. It's a privilege to be here. I don't care what race you are. I don't care what gender you are. I don't care what your sexuality. It doesn't matter. Turning all of these things into racial issues or gender issues is ridiculous. There are certain things. If you, to tell somebody that you can't, you're not going to be held to a certain level of responsibility because of their race is insulting to them. It's insulting to everybody. If you permit into this district and you behave a certain way positively, then you stay in the district. You are to be held to a certain standard, different from those children who live in this district. I know there's a push to get kids who are permitted into the district for their parents to vote. All this stuff is ridiculous. You permit into the district, it's a, you're given a, it's a privilege, and you should be held to a higher standard. And from what I'm saying, from what I'm hearing and from what I'm seeing, those kids aren't being held to that standard. So I don't even think, big worry, there's no big worry about having to hold them to that, to that standard because apparently, they're not even being held to that standard as it is. So say we have to worry about it and change it is ridiculous.
Thank you, Howard. Next up is Tristan. Thank you, Howard. Next up is Tristan. It's a pretty long question, so let me know if you need me to repeat it.
Yeah, could you please?
Yeah, sure. Uh, non-district students attending on permit are essential to maintaining CCD USD's enrollment and funding. They also represent a significant portion of our racial and economic diversity. But currently, these students are subject to tougher academic and disciplinary standards. As a board member, what specific policy changes would you advocate for to balance excellence, equity, and economics in this situation?
Yeah, thank you so much. And I just want to start off by saying this is why lived experience matters. Um, as a former graduate from this district, I can tell you that permit students, um, who by the way are overwhelmingly black and brown, um, are held to a different standard, and um they should not be criminalized, and they're simply for how they show up in the world. Um, to me, uh, this question is about equitable education um, and how we're gonna meet the needs of all of our students while we meet them where they are, and spotlighting on college and career readiness. Um, I know there's stats that are always thrown around, we have a ninety-nine percent graduation rate, but a fifty percent college readiness rate. Um, the number or the percentage of students who overwhelmingly aren't college and career-ready are, again, overwhelmingly black and brown, overwhelmingly English language learners, overwhelmingly students with disabilities and IP's, and overwhelmingly students who are on permit. Um, to me, I think that how we meet this moment and address those issues are making sure that we're committed to rigorous course opportunities for every student. Um, every graduate student should a- access, um, should or should have access to any path of their choosing. Um, I also think that we do this by detracting English, math, and science courses, um, and making sure that we're supporting students with disabilities to pull inclusion. Um, again, I just wanted to double down on how I started this, because we cannot continue to invest dollars in systems of oppression that other students simply for how they show up. It is not their fault that they cannot afford our astronomical housing prices in Culver City, so the least that we can do is allow them to come to our schools and live, and just get by and meet their needs and succeed. That's what I want to do. That's the work that I'm committed to on the school board. That's the work that I'm committed to nine-to-five as a case matter, and as the case manager in Jordan Downs, and that's the lens that I plan to bring to the school board.
Thank you, Tristan. Daryl, let me know if you need me to repeat the question.
Hope I've got it. Um, you know, you you talk to parents about students on permits, you get different views. Some seem happy, some seem unhappy, there's all kinds of different I say misperceptions. I have a pretty strong view that students on permits are part of our community. Um, and I'm proud that we have students who want to come to our schools. I think that, you know, not every school district has that. We do. Um, and students who are here on permits actually benefit the school in one important way. Having a larger high school in particular, right, allows you to have more course offerings than you could have otherwise. Uh, because you can hire more personnel. Uh, you you don't simply scale up, you become more complex. So there's something that we all owe to having students who are on permits. Also, um, the diversity that comes with students on permits is actually one of the great benefits of this school. We have an amazingly diverse school district. Uh, this is one of the triumphs of Culver City Unified, is that we have a school district that is it blows your mind when you when you come in and you realize the kind of diversity that our schools are able to support. Uh, so I think it's really important that students who are on permits and students who are residents uh be treated the same, that we not distinguish between them to the extent that we can. And if that means raising our expectations for students who are residents, perhaps it does. I I will reject the idea that we need to uh in some way criminalize more behavior for uh students on purpose. Uh, we need to treat everyone as members of our community, and I think our school district is stronger when we all do that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Uh, next up is Brian.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said earlier, I mean, I was a classroom teacher for for a number of years. I've never understood the debate about uh permit students in Culver City. Uh, permit students bring in a lot of of things with them. It's not like they're empty vessels when they come. They bring different experiences, different, you know, life experiences, different diver- types of diversity, economic diversity, experience diversity, racial and ethnic diversity, language diversity. I mean, those are all things that we want. Um, as a classroom teacher, you don't have second-class citizens. You don't have one set of rules for these students and another set of rules for another group of students. We don't say, oh, you all can get away with this, but you, you're not from here, so you're gonna get in trouble for that. That I've never understood that, that whole second-class citizenship idea. Uh, we have policies about students coming in. Once we accept a student, as far as I'm concerned, they're our student. Uh, they get the same rights, they have the same access to services, they they make our community better, they are part of our community. You know, it's just like other groups of students. You don't look at your classroom and say, well, these are my students, but that one, he's learning English. He's he's not really one of mine. That one, that one's got an IP. She's not really one of mine. They they're all your students. They're all our students. And once they're part of our community, they're part of our community. I think we should actually be talking about how do we make the families of permit students who face a lot of of obstacles to be involved, how do we include them more? You know, if they're coming from farther, if they're coming, you know, maybe they're coming to Culver City and permitting in because they work here, but they live farther away. How do we set up things so that they can, the parents can also feel like part of our community? Because again, those increased ties, those increased relationships, that's going to make them even stronger parts of our community. I've never seen any data, I've never seen any experience that says that permit students have a higher rate of of discipline problems or a higher rate of academic problems. They're highly motivated, their parents are highly motivated to bring them there, and I think we should welcome them all.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie, you're next.
All of our students should be considered first-class students. Um, they should, uh, one of our tenants is that all of our students are capable of achieving and are worthy to achieve. And if we fail what one of those students, it doesn't matter whether they're a permit student or they live in our neighborhood, they are all a part of our community. Um, and so we need to focus on a community that has a culture of care. Because when we don't do that, and we're saying, we're we're telling folks whether or not they they live here or they permit in, that they don't belong. And when we do that, we are, we are failing our community. Um, this this ties into safety. How can we have preventative measures if we don't have enough belonging in our community? Um, this is uh when we ha- we can decrease and de-escalate the amount of conflict, the amount of bias and harassment in our, in our schools. If if we make sure that we have this culture of care and belonging here in our schools, and we should be serving everyone in a, with an equitable lens. So in terms of prevention, I I definitely I I definitely feel like we have to support more with multi-tiered systems of support and PBIS, uh preventative behavioral um intervention. It's so that we, so that we are making sure that everyone is feeling that they're part of this community and not just a second-class citizen. We have to also work for true inclusion in the, in our classrooms so that everyone is supported to achieve, and also give a little push for those who need more rigor.
Thank you, Stephanie. Summer.
So I've been a permit student. Growing up, every school I attended from second to twelfth grade was outside of my neighborhood. My kids have all attended El Ring Khan, which at one point had more than a third of our students who were on permit. Receiving a permit means that we are welcoming you into our schools, and once you're here, you should know that you have the full rights and all the opportunities of students whose addresses are in our city borders. Students are students. And the students that have a home location outside of Culver City should experience zero impact based on that, because that's all it is. It's an address. Um, it should matter whether they live in our city borders or outside of Culver City as to whether or not they receive the services that they need. Students who live in other cities and attend Culver City schools lend to our richness and the racial and ethnic and racial that um uh economical diversity that we all boast about as the fourth or fifth most diverse school district in the state. It comes in large part to students who don't live in Culver City. So they bring as much to our Culver City schools as we think we are giving to them. And we need to acknowledge that. It is not just a privilege for them to attend our schools, it is a privilege for us to have them in our schools. Not all students who live in other cities and attend our schools are high need. So we also have to check our biases and expectations of their needs. It's entirely about looking at each student as an individual and ensuring every student who enrolls in our schools has a sense of belonging. We need to eliminate any policies and contracts that families have to sign related to tardies, behaviors, academic achievement, based on a student's home address, because again, that's all it is, is a difference of code. Instead, we need to focus on what they need to be supported in our district based on their unique circumstance and meet those needs. The middle school has a club called Web, started by some all-star counselors and staff, and it means where everybody belongs. That should be our philosophy district-wide, and let it inform how we serve students and their families.
Thank you, Summer. Okay, thank you for sharing your thoughts on permitted students. We're moving on to our next question, which is how can Culver City Schools attract and retain exceptional and diverse faculty and staff? Please list three policies that could help get and keep the best people. And we'll be starting with Stephanie on this question.
Creating abundant and affordable housing for teachers is one way to diminish disparities in educational experience of for students. Because it enables diverse, highly qualified and skilled educators and staff to live in the community where they work. It's unfortunate when members of CCD leave our schools because they can't afford to live in or close by enough to our city. This problem affects even CCD's most senior leaders as uh Board of Education immediate past president Dr. Tashawn McKeithen resigned and left the district because of a more than fifty percent rent hike recently. We need abundant housing at all price points in all neighborhoods, not just commercial corridors. CCD can be part of the solution by joining local efforts for abundant and more affordable housing. I support efforts to utilize land owned by educational agi- agencies for housing, including workforce housing for teachers and staff. Research should be conducted about the about the development of residential housing on district-owned property in Culver City. Furthermore, our district can better attract and retain diverse talent by better supporting the health and wellness of all staff through livable wages, continuing education incentives, and childcare. That's how we attract, retain, and um, and uh and support a great quality of life for district employees and those who are looking of for new jobs. Because the job market out there for uh to to get qualified, the best talent, it's tough. It, this is tough everywhere. So if we can still be uh, if we can have incentives to for people to want to work here and provide a great quality of life, um, that's the way to go.
Thank you. Okay, next is Brian.
Thank you. Um, you know, I would say the first one, and this is somebody, again, who who's been a classroom teacher and and a union person in in a school district for a long time, uh salary and benefits. I mean, one of the first things that people will look at if they're looking to come into your district is 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 it paying competitively? Are the benefits something that they're gonna be able to take care of their family with? Um, they're also going to be looking at things like cost of housing, Stephanie mentioned that, you know, and and something we need to look into are housing supports of various kinds, transportation supports. If people are not able to live in the community, you know, what can we do to make it uh more than more able to? So there's an economic side to it, without a doubt. I think a another one, though, is treating folks like professionals when they're here. Um, and and word gets out how you're treated by your district, and and people know. And so treating folks professionally means uh not fighting them on every time you go to negotiate and not having a, you know, contentious negotiations every time because the district is withholding information or or, you know, trying to to lowball and treat folks uh unprofessionally. I think it also, though, fades into, it also moves into the way that you engage your teachers uh and other educators and other staff. This includes classified staff. When they're at work, are you treating them like professionals? Do they have a voice in the in the decisions that are made on the campus? Do they have a voice in the decisions that are made at the district? Do they have control of their own professional development, or is it always mandates coming from above saying you need training on this, and we're gonna bring in this expert, and we're gonna spend a bunch of money on that? Or are you tapping your own staff and the expertise in your own classified and and certificated teacher's staff and and counselors and other folks about letting them uh, giving them some space to get their own training and to train each other on best practices. Word gets around. People like that type of environment and want to be part of that environment. The last one that I would say really quickly, just about recruit, is recruiting widely. Uh, really reaching out to colleges in in the area and trying to make sure that you're recruiting the most diverse, ethnically, religiously, economically, you know, recruiting widely, so you can hire well.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Summer.
So the Economic Policy Institute identified, um, they did this workforce, actually, they identified low pay, a challenging school environment, and weak professional development, support, and recognition as the primary reasons for teachers leaving the profession, and this was back in two thousand nineteen. Last year, Ed Ed Week Research Center found that fifty-four percent of teachers said that they were somewhat or very likely to leave the profession, which was up from thirty-four percent of teachers who were asked in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, and this was again before the pandemic started. The National Education Association says that that number jumped up to fifty-five percent this year. Many of those people who are saying they want to leave the profession are Black and Latinx educators looking to leave the profession when we need them the most because they are already underrepresented. We have a dire teacher attrition on top of what was already a teacher shortage. And ninety percent, and that's the NDA statistic, not mine, are saying educators are experiencing burnout. That burnout is felt by teachers and staff alike. Our own morale survey in the district demonstrated this. And so I think we can start with three things. Increase base pay for all employees to eliminate the wage gap between teachers and comparable professions, and also increase the living wage for all education support staff. That's one. Modernize our school buildings and fix the broken infrastructure. And also provide opportunities for growing our own so that staff know that we are investing in them because we believe in them and their ability to serve our students.
Thank you, Summer. Daryl. How can Culver City Schools attract and retain exceptional and diverse faculty and staff? Please list three policies that could help get and keep the best people.
Well, thank you. You know, we attract the best diverse faculty, uh, the way you attract everyone to any kind of job, really. You know, I want to make it our goal, our mission, to have working for Culver City Schools be the most coveted educational job in Los Angeles County, and that starts with economics. You know, people choose where to work based on, you know, first of all, compensation. We gotta put those dollars, the ones that Summer was referring to, which are great, put these in the classroom so that we can, and also for the classified staff. I don't want to leave that out, but we'll talk specifically about the classroom and about teachers. Need to make sure that we are making sure our compensation package is not only comparable, but perhaps even slightly better when we can make it better. Then there's job satisfaction. I know Brian was talking about that, and that's super important. People don't go into teaching because they want to be rich. They go into teaching because they want to feel rewarded with the work they do. You know, and so you've got to make sure that that feeling is what people have, and you know, when you walk onto a campus where the community has pride in the school, you can feel it. The bathrooms are clean, people are smiling, their things are taken care of. This is the kind of need to make sure that we are doing on our campuses, and we need to make sure that our professionals are respected, you know. Everyone knows that at the end of the day, teachers need to be left to teach. There's training you give them, there's all that, but there's also respecting work in the classroom with the kids. And that, that work, people know, I I I gotta, I try and give a great answer on that, you know, the teachers talk to one another. Word gets around. Need to make sure that we are doing what teachers need, and that requires collaboration. We need to make sure that we are working with our professional unions early on in the process. They are part of our policymaking from day one, because we know that our teachers, as well as our administrators and our school, all care about student achievement.
Thank you, Daryl. Howard, you're next.
Thank you. Um, I, Brian, Brian mentioned the union, and a lot of people have mentioned pay, and you know, I think the main thing you can do to not only attract but retain good teachers is you can treat your current staff well. Job satisfaction is an all-encompassing sort of phrase, encompasses pay, it encompasses uh, you know, boots-on-the-ground details and how things are working on campuses. But again, when seventy percent of teachers at the high school say there are no consequences, and the head of the union, the union rep, I'm sorry, the union rep for the teachers' union said that in seventeen years, I I've never seen, like, again, like Brian, I've worked in in many schools with many many unions, many districts. I've never seen a union rep have to address a school board and say that in seventeen years, he'd never seen anything like the situation, the failed security situation on our campuses. You know, the first The failed security situation on our campuses, you know, the first thing many of our candidates and some of the remaining board members are talking about is housing. Seventy percent of our teachers are saying they don't feel safe. They don't feel like there are any consequences. Not one syllable of how we're going to changes. It's still about alternative forms of dealing with security issues. And those are all great, but then they're not even being implemented correctly. And they're not talking about any kind of traditional security situation. Look, I understand. I don't want to traumatize kids, but there are middle grounds and nobody's talking about that. And everybody's talking about how we can retain and train and attract great teachers. It's not housing. It's about taking the seventy percent and probably more of the teachers at the high school and other, other schools, uh, the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools who are unsatisfied with what's going on at the top and doing something about that. But nobody wants to address that because nobody really cares about that. And that's the problem. We need to clean our campuses. We need to fix the tiles. We need to make sure that our kids can go to the bathroom. They're holding it in. Kids are hotboxing the bathrooms. They're, they're dealing drugs. They're fighting. They're, 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 there's no toilet paper and there's no, uh, no paper towels, just basic things that we can do to make sure that our staff currently are happy is what we can do to retain it.
All right, uh, next is Tristan.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I appreciate this question a lot, um, because this was the work that I was dedicated and committed to. Um, when I was an equity specialist in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion at Syracuse University. Um, that piece about recruiting and retaining, but one thing that we talked about there, which I think really needs to be applied in this district and beyond is that before we talk about recruiting, we need to make sure that we have a system that is supportive of Black and Brown educators and staff before we bring them in here because it is inhumane and immoral to bring in diverse staff into a system that we knowingly acknowledge is not supportive. So that's the work that we need to be committed to is first and foremost, making sure that this is, um, a district that, um, lets Black and Brown educators, uh, thrive, um, and supports them, um, when they need it. Um, I then also want to talk about, uh, teacher morale. Um, that survey came out and showed that teacher morale was at an all-time low. I think this is one of the points where we need to really listen to the experts, um, and talk to our Black and Brown staff that are currently here right now and ask them what we can implement um, structurally, um, to make it more supportive. Um, I think that we need to work on partnership and creating, um, I'm sorry, there's a dog over there rolling around. Um, and I think we need to talk about, um, partnership and how we can, um, create a place where people can come to us and let us know what they need to see. Um, because I fully believe that, um, classroom inside educators are committed to student-centered practices. Um, and the school board must address the burnout crisis by directing, um, resources to the dual needs of professional support and social emotional well-being. Uh, for our teachers and staff. Um, so I was used to last year, we stuck about what I want to see in the district. I've been saying that the district needs to have a hearing on trauma, trauma and all that it looks like. Because for those who are saying, or those who don't agree, housing insecurity is traumatic. Bringing Black and Brown educators into space that isn't supportive is traumatic. Overpolicing is traumatic. So we need to have a hearing from specialists on what trauma looks like and then center people who are experts in the work on how we can best address these issues.
Thank you, Tristan. All right, that concludes our third question answers. We're now moving on to our fourth question. Um, which is students as young as in middle school are subjected to verbal and physical gender-based harassment. Harassment that is not formally addressed by the schools in any way until high school. These problems were raised by student activists through POC for Change in Dear Culver. What specific policies do you recommend to address this and at what age would you suggest they be introduced? Our first respondent candidate will be, uh, Summer.
First of all, we have to build trust. Um, work has been done, done over the years with student-focused groups and advisory councils, professional development. But none of that really matters if we're not being honest about the overall lack of understanding, not just in our schools, but in our, in our communities at large about the LGBTQ community and their needs. I recently spoke in favor of our district's, um, safe haven for LGBTQ plus student, staff and families, which is great. But again, if it's not, if there's not a policy behind it, if it's not funded and if there isn't a political will, then good luck seeing that transform in our community, in our schools and in our classrooms. We must build curricula highlighting the contributions of current and historical LGBTQ plus people. We must reflect LGBTQ plus people and diversity in our libraries, classroom literature, staff and in positions of leadership. We must also support affinity groups, uh, for students, staff and their families to cultivate an environment of understanding and belonging. All of our students need to know that we care about them, their mental health, their social emotional growth. But we also need to acknowledge that there are some communities of people, some, just like the LGBTQ plus community of students who are more than four times as likely to commit or attempt suicide than their peers. So it takes examining our instructional practices, our curriculum, SCL services through a lens of intersectionality um, to make sure that we truly have space, safe spaces for all students. And that cannot wait until they're in middle school or high school. One thing that we tend to do as parents sometimes or even um, educational experts, depending on which grade you're, you're working with. You put your head in the sand and think that some of these problems don't show up until a student is in middle school or high school. But they are learning about these things before we're having these conversations, which means this needs to start in kindergarten. We need to make sure that there is age-appropriate education about all of the community people, that all of the people in our community and the families that are represented so that people can grow up having pride.
Okay, I'm going to repeat that question. Students as young as middle school are subjected to verbal and physical gender-based harassment. Harassment that is not meaningfully addressed by schools in any way until high school. Um, sorry. What specific policies would you recommend to address this and at what age would you suggest they be introduced? And Tristan, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Culver City has an opportunity to lead on many LGBTQ plus issues. Not only within our own municipality, but by partnering with adjacent municipalities like West Hollywood, um, and Beverly Hills. I think as a board member, I believe in incorporating and expanding LGBTQI plus history and culture into our school district curriculum as early as elementary school. And I was second, Summer, um, part of what Brad, um, saying as early as kindergarten. Um, providing necessary funding to increase the number of onsite counselors and supporting the hiring of trauma-informed specialists that can support um, a culture of clear and explicitly stated behavioral expectations from students and staff. Um, I believe in reforming our district-wide approach to discipline. I'm implementing what sort of justice PK through twelve. But I think that we also need to acknowledge that doing this work means personnel changes. It means training. It means implementation of research-based pragmatic work geared toward the community and age group we're working with. Um, I'm fully and unequivocally committed to centering the voices of those who have historically been underrepresented and making sure that we do that um, with an equity and racial justice lens. Um, I think that we do that by elevating the voices um, of our affinity groups and also encouraging that they create more affinity groups. Um, one that comes to mind right now is our tolerance club, um, and actively listening, learning and acting when they give us a call to action. We do this by comprehensive surveying, um, and make sure that when aggregated, our responses, um, and respondents are similar to and representative of the population, the community at large.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is Stephanie. And again, this is about physical and verbal gender-based harassment. And when you think policies and education, um, should occur in our schools.
Culver City's return to on-campus learning in two thousand twenty-one or in, in even August of two thousand twenty-one clearly showed to us that the, the pandemic lengthened performance gaps, but also, uh, for the most marginalized students as well. Bias, microaggressions and harassment became more apparent. My children and I were witnessing and hearing about high tensions and escalating conflicts amongst, um, students and staff. Um, in April, two thousand twenty-two, after speaking to yet another family in tears and and frustration over homophobic bias and harassment they faced and subsequent retaliation for reporting the problems. I promised to them that they weren't alone and that I would advocate for them. I contacted school leadership about implementing bystander intervention training by the organization Right to Be, which provides resources to identify bias, disrupt harassment and prevent future conflict. Students, families and staff cannot thrive when they are experiencing trauma and they don't have a safe, supportive learning environment. In addition to including age-appropriate LGBTQ curriculum in elementary school, my three priorities to strengthen, uh, belonging and affirm identity of our students is to strengthen multi-tiered systems to support and differentiate in the classroom to help all students. And, uh, two, to introduce anti-racist and intersectional programming like bystander intervention, um, training, like I mentioned, from Right to Be and also from welcoming schools, um, from the Human Rights Campaign to disrupt and prevent bias and harassment. Three, as I mentioned before, our anti-hate resolution or our safe space proclamation means nothing, nothing without accountability. We must create a framework for reporting bias and harassment incidents. Um, the collection of data is necessary to establish a benchmark and goal setting. These steps will create a greater sense of belonging and safety in our schools because our, when our stakeholders are receiving the care they need.
Time, sorry. Okay, um, next we have, um, Howard.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to what I said earlier, uh, in my introduction, um, about using our kids as props and pawns and professing to care about and launching biopersonal attacks on anyone and everyone and making decisions based on just an agenda. And I'll go to the de-tracking issue, which is how I kind of got involved with all of this. Uh, from the beginning, the moment it was announced until the moment they, uh, presented, the district presented to the board. Um, they did whatever they wanted to do. They didn't listen to anybody. They pushed everything through. They took no care, concern or any kind of consideration for people who said this isn't going to work, me being one of them. People always talking about centering the experts and lived experience and all this stuff. I'm a walking lived experience about de-tracking and how it wasn't going to work and nobody listened. And they pushed it through to the detriment of what's going to be the entire district. So I hear things like, oh, I want to implement LGBTQ education at kindergarten level. And I think to myself, you know, no, because bullying of any kind, I am wholly and unabashedly against bullying. But this smacks of just trying to stuff some kind of agenda into our schools. And I do not think at any, in any situation is necessary to have this sort of education going, because I know it's not just about educating. It's about indoctrinating and it's going to sound cliche, but they're trying to get all this stuff into the schools at the earliest levels and it is not necessary. We have Pride Month where we celebrate, we celebrate LGBTQ, uh, people. We have parades. We have all kinds of educational things in, in place. We have, um, I mean, we, we can, we can use it during, uh, during high school. If you want to introduce it during high school, you want to introduce during middle school, that family planning, all that stuff. There are many opportunities to introduce this sort of education, but elementary school, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Next is Daryl. And I will repeat the question. Students as young as in middle school are subjected to verbal and physical gender-based harassment. Um, these problems were raised by student activists through POC for Change in Dear Culver. What specific policies do you recommend to address this and at what age would you suggest they be introduced?
Well, thanks. That's an interesting question. Um, you know, our schools actually do a surprisingly good job of dealing with, you know, anti-bullying and starting at an early age to talk about gender harassment, sexual harassment. Uh, you know, certainly I can think back to thirty years even when I was in school, how different it was. But yeah, schools do surprisingly good job. I understand the premise of the questions that a lot of it's happening. I know it happens, but I actually think that we're, this is one of the strengths of our schoolers in, in that. So we need to continue what we do. We need to trust the teachers in their classrooms to be able to handle some of these behavior at the younger grades. Uh, and that's, that's how you deal with it in age-appropriate way. We, you have, you're dealing with kids. And, you know, children do things that adults would never do. And learning how to handle children appropriately is something that happens within the classroom. I think we need to listen to the teachers, trust to them when they tell us what's going on. And I don't think necessarily additional training is necessarily required. Uh, but we do need to make sure that it's front of mind. Uh, and when we talk about, uh, you know, again, sexual harassment, gender harassment, we have to recognize it's it's a problem that's pervasive in our entire society. It's not something that's specific to CCUSD when it happens. And educating our children about these things gradually in the process is important. What do you do in elementary schools? Again, it's age-appropriate is going to be fairly limited. You know, you, children don't understand everything about sexual harassment. They don't necessarily know what they're doing. Uh, so you've got to make sure that you're, again, talking to the teachers, making sure the classrooms work. And we don't want to criminalize everything that takes place on the schoolyard because that just leads us to, it leads us to the wrong, wrong direction. Thanks.
Sorry, Brian, your thoughts on gender-based harassment?
Thank you. And I apologize if I look down a lot. I have lots of notes. LGBTQ kids exist at every age. LGBTQ families exist no matter what the age of the kids are. There, there's no time when it's not appropriate to talk to students because that's the lived experience of students and families. I think there are age-appropriate ways to talk about any subject, including sexual harassment or gender identity harassment. Um, you know, the, the Fair Act has been law since two thousand eleven. The, the state says, you know, it is appropriate to be doing age-appropriate education on these subjects with students. And in my experience, educating students on these things, making it less strange for the students who this isn't part of their lived experience, getting rid of the fear, getting rid of the strangeness, you know, just kind of normalizing some of these things really takes a lot of that out. Kids make fun of things that are different. Kids make fun of things that they hear in the community. They make fun of things that are, are, you know, scary to them or whatever. A- as they get used to these things, as they see it's no, normal, it's not, it, it lessens the, the impact and it lessens the incidence of this kind of stuff. Um, you know, and I think as kids get older, you get more into specifics, you get more into celebrations and things like that. But I think too often we end at celebrations. And I think, you know, you want LGBT kids to feel included and feel safe. Help them, have them be part of the leadership. You know, you want any kind of kid to feel safe. Stop just celebrating them. Have them actually make significant decisions and have real leadership roles in the community and in the school. Um, I think, I think bullying is still going to happen, no matter how much education you do. And at that point, you've got to have systems that support the student who has been bullied. You've got to support, have the, the mental health systems developed for that people, those, those folks to go, kids. Um, you've got to have safe spaces. You've also got to have appropriate consequences for the kids who are doing the bullying and, and doing things that are hurtful and, and, uh, inappropriate. And that's where systems like MTSS come out and actually having articulated and having everybody in the system, no, I'm a teacher. I've just seen this. What can I do to support the student and what's an appropriate response?
All right, um, we've made it to our final question of the evening. How do you plan to improve relationships among the board members? And how do you plan to improve relationships between the community and the board? Um, we will start with Tristan.
Yeah, thanks so much. Um, so I, yeah, I can talk about the community, the community relationship first because I think that, um, just as board members or elected officials, we do a better job or I need to do a better job at coming out and being in the community and making themselves known. Uh, meeting people where they are being in, um, at community events, coming to great events like Culver City Pride, um, coming to things like Juneteenth, um, and just showing up, um, for us and being out there, um, and engaging in people. Um, as for relationships for fellow board members, I know it may be hard, um, to engage or mend relationships based on board policies because we do have the Brown Act, so that prohibits the board members from engaging, um, with just one or with more than just one other, um, a member. But I think that we just need to make sure that we are listening to each other, but making sure that we're also fully committing ourselves to the work um, in how we engage and respond to being called out and called in. Um, I think that that's very important. Um, and yeah.
Thank you, Tristan. Howard, you're next.
Sorry, give me one sec. Thank you. Uh, well, that was actually the first plank in my platform. Um, you know, communities need to believe that the people that they've entrusted with the well-being of their children take that responsibility seriously. And with the past year, uh, parents, students, faculty and residents have really, they've been repeatedly ignored. They've been derided. They've been deceived. They've been vilified by both the board, district administrators and the superintendent. And it is an untenable situation. And I'll say this, I, I always refer to myself as, as a, um, I, I, I don't want to be running for school board. I don't know. The last thing I really wanted to do was run for school board. But because of the situation, because of what's gone over the last year, I felt like I had no choice. So I'm running. So what we can do, at least for the, for the stakeholders in Culver City, we can't ignore them. We can't make any more empty promises. You can't demonize people who disagree with you or ask questions who dare, dare to, dare to, you know, kind of push back a little bit on the decisions that the board is making. We can't be making backroom decisions. We can't have these school board meetings that go until one thirty in the morning, waiting out even the most diehard political junkie until they finally fall asleep to stick some vote sixteen thing or, or, or some other thing that the truth of the matter is, most people don't agree with. No more politicizing our kids or, or politicizing the classrooms or, or allowing teachers to No more politicizing our kids or, or politicizing the classrooms or, or allowing teachers to, uh, to, to vilify. I mean, I've been a teacher for a long time. So Brian says he's been a teacher for a long time as well. It's been a long, twenty-two years. I'm a pretty opinionated person and I'd be hard pressed to find one moment where any of my students could tell by something that I said where I stood on a political, political matter. That's not who I am, but I do not believe that's what teachers should be doing. They've taken it upon themselves to not only express their political views, but to vilify and to demonize kids in a number of situations. We're getting into that another time. As far as how we deal with each other on the board, it's just a matter of respect. It's the same thing. Do the same thing that we're doing with the, the stakeholders and the community members that we do with other board members, and I think things will be okay.
Thank you, Howard. Brian?
Thank you. So excellent questions, both of them. I think on the question about the relationship between the school board and what I would do with it. When, when I was a, a classroom teacher, when I was working with the union, we wouldn't get involved in the, the process and we would support certain candidates for school board, you know, we wouldn't, you know, be on panels and things like that for interviews for principals and things like that. You support who you support. In the end, choices are made, whether it's the electorate or, or human resources, choosing somebody. And you work with what you've got. You know, sometimes the candidates we supported got elected and hooray, you know, we have a built-in relationship. Sometimes the candidate we didn't support got elected and you know what? We needed to have a relationship because that person is, is involved in this. And it's not about us. It's not about, you know, us checking our egos at the door because it's, it's ultimately about the students and the schools. And, you know, sometimes you work with people that you don't necessarily like and want to hang out with, but you've got a professional responsibility to work with those folks. And, you know, whether it's trying to educate them or just create something better for the students out of that, uh, you do it. Um, and, and you know, whoever is elected, I've got some folks who I'm going to vote for, but I'm going to work with whoever's elected. With regard to the community, I think our biggest mistake is we always talk about having an open door. And we say our doors open, the community can come in. But you know what? Sometimes the community can't come in for a lot of different reasons. The community can't go in. And I think it's incumbent on us to go out to the community. When we would do community organizing, we would go out to, you know, community centers, churches, synagogues, whatever. We didn't have any synagogues in Lenox. But we went out to different places wherever the people were at. We would go to restaurants and meet people. We would go to people's houses and meet people if that's what they need. And if that's what it took, we would bring food if that's what it took. We would bring translators if that's what it took. We would bring childcare if that's what it took. But getting out into the community really means going out into the community and building the trust and building the relationships. So folks who traditionally don't, uh, participate where they're not able to, they don't feel comfortable. But allowing those folks to come in and then start getting their voices represented and then showing them the results of their participation. That school is actually changing in ways that benefit their.
Thank you. All right, next, um, we have Stephanie.
Productive discourse is necessary on the board. A diverse thought brings the best solutions to the forefront. And we can all treat each other professionally and build bridges without needing to always agree one hundred percent. My professional experience and volunteer work demonstrate my ability to build relationships. As Vice President National Broadcast at Zenith Media, I was leading the orchestration of three hundred plus million dollars in annual ad buying for consumer brands. In that role, I built, developed and managed a team that executed media transactions with dozens of television networks and video platforms. Leading cross-collaboration with multiple agency partners and networks and building relationships and unifying under a goal despite competing agendas. Relationship building is essential to meet everyone's needs in our schools. Without trust, we cannot establish a positive working environment to educate our students. A culture of care makes everyone feel validated and heard. This includes board members and district employees. CCUSD can support teachers, admin and staff, all, all stakeholders better by removing barriers and leaving their pain points. We can build better partnerships by providing safe spaces to hear employee concerns and suggestions without retaliation. Especially followed by appropriate actions for resolution. CCUSD can also improve relationships by conveying clear expectations in timely and transparent communications. The district needs to work in close partnership with school staff and teachers for the collective goal of educating our students and preparing them for the future. That's all of our goal with the best of intentions. And this will provide a rich community for all of us to thrive. No matter whether or not we have, we agree completely, we should always treat each other professionally and, and with respect.
Thank you, Stephanie, Summer.
I think that sort of the double-edged swords of sword of democracy is that you have elected officials who may not have any experience in the role they're serving. And that is the same case with board members. Board members in our official capacities are representatives who are elected to be responsible to the community and the people that we serve, which means making policies and allocating funding that serve all of our students. And just like our employees, board members need to make sure that we are participating in training and professional development to understand education, the systems of education and how they work, best practices on what has been proven works in the classroom and what can we do to support our staff and the teachers who serve our students. And also being prepared, like showing up to board meetings, having read through your entire packet and knowing how the policies that you may approve will have a lasting impact on students who are here today and students that may be coming in the, in the coming years. Reading and making sure that you are staying up to date on local laws that affect our schools as well as state and national decisions that are made. That's to me what makes a good board member. And the computer, the, the community needs to trust that as their representatives, we are going to do these things because we have the best interest of our students and staff. I can't speak for every board member or candidate who's here who may be elected, but I work to build trust by being present and visible in our school communities, visiting and volunteering on our campuses where I have kids and even where I don't have kids and listening and learning from our staff and students. Because they really are the experts. They are the boots on the ground. They are experiencing the effects of the decisions that we make. And I make every decision through the lens of this feels right to me right now, but I need to check in with the people that it affects. And I often say that my job as a board member is to think about if something is good for eighty-five percent of the people, I have to be responsible for what happens or the impact on the other fifteen percent. I caution us to focus so much on board relationships because we're individual people and we have to be self-governing.
Okay, Daryl?
Uh, you know, I've served on boards of various institutions in the past and at, at one level, they're all the same. Which is, there are three things you got to focus on, compromise, consensus and collaboration. Sometimes those seem like dirty words, but actually those are important because the board needs to work towards consensus when it can. Because unlike a legislative body, the school board needs to be able to speak with one voice when it's all done. So that we can support the superintendent and so that we can speak with one voice directly to the unions. And then when we're negotiating, we're actually not dealing with multiple back channels, but we're actually directly talking to one another and making progress. And the same lessons work for the community, you know. It doesn't matter how wildly different people's politics are. We're all connected because we all have our kids in those schools. We have people to talk to everyone in the community. And how do we improve relationships between the board and the community? We've got to talk to parents. We cannot be making decisions simply on Zoom meetings. We've got to have town hall meetings. We've got to bring people in. We've got to talk to them. We've got to take the time to persuade. That's really important. We've made a number of decisions over the last couple of years that have been controversial. And in part of the reason the controversy persisted was that not a lot of effort was made to really communicate, really try to persuade parents, meet parents where they're at, which is not always where the board is. That part of an elected official's job is the most important part of a school board member's job because they represent the community. And the community is everybody. It doesn't matter what your own demographics are. You have to represent people of every single demographic and every single view, to the extent that you can, you had to listen to them, take into their views and then try to do what's best for the. It's not an easy job to do that, but that is how you repair relationships with the community.
Thank you, Daryl. All right. Thank you all for your answers to all the questions this evening. Um, we've completed the question round of, uh, rounds of this forum. And now we're going to move on to closing statements and we will start with Howard and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I have a bit of a reputation for being someone who speaks his mind and I'm sure, based on some of the things I've heard, read and seen, this group of people, I'm sure a lot of people have more, you know, definitive opinions of me. And some of the answers I gave tonight, don't jive with a lot of the answers that a lot of the candidates gave. But I do want to say that I come to this, I, I saying early, I'm, I'm a reluctant candidate. Like I said, there are a million things I'd rather be doing. Uh, I know how vitriolic and, and, and dramatic this whole process can be. And the last thing I wanted to be doing was running for school board. However, I really do see a situation where this, this, the district's at a tipping point. And I feel like I'm here, I don't have higher aspirations, I don't have aspirations for higher office. I don't even necessarily want to run for a second term if I'm, if I'm elected. I just want to right this ship, hand it off to someone who we can trust to guide the district moving forward and just kind of sashay off into the sunset. My only agenda is to make sure that all of our kids are doing well. And people take that and say, oh, all of our kids. Well, it's not that. It's that all of our kids are being traumatized by what's going on. They're, they're, they're going through some, some really horrible suffering right now. The staff, the faculty, the community at large, parents, caregivers and other stakeholders. I know what we've gone through for the past year. I know what could happen if this continues. Over, I, I, I will say, if we go down the same path that we've been going down for the next year, that there isn't going to be much of a district left to save. And I really fear that. And look, there are people here that have been in Culver City for decades. There are people here that just got to Culver City. This is for all of us. This isn't just for my kids. Not just for white kids, not just for straight kids, it's for all kids. And I truly believe that if we do the right thing and we nominate the right people and elect the right people, that we can really change this around. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Tristan?
Yeah, and thank you so much, Maxamina, for facilitating this conversation. And again, to the Democratic Club for, um, having us here and allowing us all individuals to, even though we disagreed to speak truth to our power, I'm going to talk about the issues that matter, um, to us all. I'm just going to double down, um, on my intro and kind of finish my intro because I, I don't have time. But again, we are at an inflection point in our district. Um, and I think that what the people need, the students and faculty and staff need, um, the times require our bold leadership, bold systemic change. And, um, I'm so happy to be offering that. Um, I know that we talked about, um, my policy platform being rooted in diversity and inclusion, but also rooted in community, um, and what's impacting, um, our communities the most. And I think that I have the tested and proven track record to back it up, um, and also the support. And I do want to finish talking about support and I'll end off with why that's important. But I know we talked about Assessor Jeff Prang and Councilor Mike Bonin, um, as well as our mayor and their council members and, and our super majority on the school board. But I also want to announce for the first time today publicly that I've also been supported by the labor rights activist and agitator Dolores Cuerta. So, you know, this work, uh, has been rooted in people who have been, um, doing it. And I just hope to keep continuing to, uh, expand it and make sure that we're making, that our communities and our district and our schools are, are going as far and as deep as I heard us and believe me, it's deep. So, um, again, I just want to thank you, Maxamina, so much for facilitating this and, and to the Democratic Club for having us.
Thank you so much, Tristan. Um, Summer, your closing statements?
Uh, so my areas of focus now and in the coming years will be our students and staff, mental health, with an emphasis on the trauma-informed care, developing and refining plans to keep our students physically healthy and safe during these ever-changing times. Increasing student engagement to ensure their voices are well represented in all of the decisions we make that directly impact them. Reaffirming parents as partners with outreach of disenfranchised families and education, so our families know their rights and how to effectively advocate for their students. And of course, analyzing our budget through the lens of educational justice. Educational justice is bigger than equity. Equity has the connotation of just focusing on students. You can't have educational justice without supporting the staff and giving them the tools they need to succeed. Educational justice means providing staff, teachers and admin with effective training, relevant professional development and fair pay. I'm the most experienced candidate in the area of local public policy directly impacting our Culver City schools. I know this district and I've built relationships with countless people. Even when we don't agree, I have a reputation of being collaborative because it's the right thing to do and because I care. I love this district and I'm also critical of it because very few challenges we face are black and white. They're nuanced and our students deserve us taking the time to understand how every decision we make will impact them. With receipts open regardless of the election outcome, the majority of our board will have less than three years of experience on the board. Once again, if re-elected, I will be relentless in securing our district's commitment to serving every student every day and liberated learning spaces of care and inclusivity. I really appreciate the time that you've given me today and I hope I have your support.
Thank you, Summer. Brian?
Thank you, and thank you to everyone here tonight for, for being part of this and, and making this a priority with you. Um, fantastic questions, good discussion tonight. I think you saw a lot about the difference where different people are coming from and what different people would bring to this position. We talked about exemplary education and how important it is to improve instruction, but to also make sure that, that we're providing a well-rounded experience for our students with arts, athletics, you know, the, the whole child's social, emotional development that requires exemplary staff and it requires staff to be feeling good about it. You know, the morale is, is, is absolutely concerning of our classified staff and of our teachers and doing what we can, whether it's, you know, economic support or whether it's, uh, helping them to control their own profession, uh, and be professionals and respect. We've talked a lot about equity and justice. You know, we can't do this without bringing all of the students along, without creating spaces um, and supports for all the students. We talked about engagement in the community. There are folks who are traditionally engaged and that's fantastic. They need to be listened to. And there are folks that are not traditionally engaged, whether that's parents, whether that's the community, whether that's the students themselves, you know, the students have a voice in this. Staff, uh, you know, all, all up and down the, the spectrum on this. One thing we talked about a little bit, and I just want to take a few seconds about, is this idea of inclusion. We talk about inclusion, we talk about access, we talk about bringing students particularly into spaces, but we don't always give them the support in those spaces to be successful. And that's a, a false type of inclusion. And I think, you know, one of the things that we have to make sure that we're doing, whether we're talking about English learners or particularly students with disabilities, when we're talking about full inclusion and that is absolutely the right thing to do, that we're actually preparing our teachers to work and support stu- with students. Um, and that we're giving students the, the resources and support they need to be successful in those. You know, we can do a lot of things. It's window dressing, whether it's, you know, window dressing diversity or window dressing inclusion. We need to make sure we're doing it authentically and including the stakeholders involved in that. There's a great expression, nothing about me, without me. We need to make sure that people are involved.
Thank you. Um, all right, Daryl.
Well, thank you to the Culver City Democrats for this forum. It's a wonderful opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, it's been great getting to know my, my fellow candidates a little better. You know, we've heard a lot tonight about what's wrong with our schools and that's fine because that's what happens in the campaign. But I really want to focus a little bit on our opportunities as a district. And I want to sort of return and closing to where I started on this. We're a, a unique place. You know, you can't, anybody who tells you that you can fix the problems of education without spending more money is not being honest with you. But anybody who thinks you can do it just by spending money is also not being honest with you. You need more resources, you need to spend the work. Our schools face real challenges and opportunities after COVID nineteen. It's been brutal for families. That's not true. So it really has been. And the school board's job, first and foremost, is to set the mission for the district. Mission should be to make Culver City Schools the best public schools in Los Angeles, Kevin. The mission should be to make, making, working, working for our schools to be the most coveted job for teachers. We need to aim that high. We don't aim that high, we'll never get close. And we need to talk more about excellence. My goals for Culver City Schools, I said them at the beginning, I want to say them again, smaller class sizes, especially elementary schools. Safe, clean spaces to learn. Make excellence in education the mission and make sure that every child is challenged. Every child deserves to be challenged in school. When it comes to diversity, equity and inclusion, let's be clear, equity is about making sure that every child gets the best that we can give. And to do that, we need our schools to strive for excellence in everything that we do. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you go to methyforculvercity.com, learn more about me and about my campaign.
Thank you, Daryl. Stephanie, last but not least, your closing statements for the evening.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to engage with all of you today. I'm so appreciative of this club for being a space that folks with like-minded values can have productive discourse and organize for the changes that we want to see in our local and state leadership and policies. Democratic leaders of Culver City have endorsed me, including city council candidates endorsed by the club. Good luck to Alex Fish and Freddie Puzza. They and many others have seen my work advocating for students and staff in Culver City Schools. I am a queer Filipino-American progressive who Culver City Democrats can trust to build and nourish lasting relationships in the community, to fight for diversity, equity and inclusion, sustainability and housing. Los Angeles County is home to the most residents of Filipino descent in the United States. Filipino-Americans need a stronger representation in educational leadership in the county that serves over thirty thousand Filipino-American students. CCDC's endorsement can be part of my historic campaign. CCDC's endorsement can be part of my historic campaign to be the first Filipino American elected to the school board in LA County outside of ABC Unified. My mission is to strengthen the pillars of achievement, belonging and community that support a culture of care, affirming all students' identities. A culture of care empowers all students, families, faculty and staff to thrive. And before I sign off, I need to send my love to my campaign team, supporters and my family for helping me. This work is a community effort and I cannot be successful alone. Thank you, amazing Culver City Democrats for your consideration. Please reach out with any questions and concerns about the district to I would love to connect with you. And it's been such a pleasure being here with you today. Thank you, Maxamina.
Thank you all. Thank you, Brian, Darrell, Howard, Stephanie, Summer and Tristan for giving us your time this evening for us to get to know you. Um, thank you so much to the organizers of the forum for always putting together these wonderful opportunities to get to know our local candidates. Again, as we, I I think I've mentioned this, that the city council forum and local politics are more important now than they ever have been. Um, so the fact that, you know, you're all here, we're all here to be engaged um in in our local communities um is critical and so important. Um, that's all for tonight. Um, I will pass it back over to Jeff for final closing statements.
Well, my thanks too to all of the candidates and and to Max. It has been uh great to uh get to know you all better the last last hour and a half. If anybody still wants to know more about these six outstanding people, and I hope you do, go to our website. They've each completed a detailed questionnaire uh with on a lot more topics than we could get into tonight. And then Wednesday night at our club meeting will be a chance for the candidates to make one last pitch and for all of our members who want to speak on the candidates of their choice to do so. Then we'll hold our endorsement vote online after the meeting and if necessary, a runoff. And the results will be announced Friday night. So I won't keep you any longer. There's a city council meeting tonight, which is also very important, but it was great to spend this time with you and good evening.
Good night, everyone. Have a great evening.
Good night. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.